...is going to assist us here.
I'm a little slow, Mayor, sorry. Adiana Clavelle with the state championship team. I didn't get your name even, the team name, but come on up. She's going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see any scouts here tonight, so we're going to have one of our excellent basketball, yes, players. Oh, boy. Yeah, I'm behind the curve here. All right, we'll hand it to her. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, and we're going to hear more about you guys in a few minutes.
Thank you. We are now privileged to have our invocation tonight by Father Dan Boyo of St. Anne Roman Catholic Parish. Thank you for being here, Father Dan. We appreciate your presence and your offer of an invocation.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, please bless Mayor Daniels and all of our city councilmen. Please give them prudence and wisdom and help, help them to continue to lead the people of the city of Gilbert well, listening always for your will and following it. And let us just pray the prayer our Lord Jesus Christ taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. And may Almighty God bless you, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father Dan. The clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Virginia Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We do have several presentations this evening. The first will be the proclamation declaring April 27, 2018, as Gilbert Arbor Day. Councilmember Eddie Cook will assist us with that. Following that, we will actually move to Agenda Item 3, which is a proclamation declaring April 15 through 22, 2018, as National Volunteer Week, and our vice mayor will assist us with that. And the last is the recognition that was alluded to earlier. We'll leave you in suspense until then. Thank you, Councilmember Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I have former councilmember Les Presnick? And do I have any of the members of the Parks Board with me here? I do not see anyone. Well, Les, get to carry the flag. Well, before we begin, why don't you introduce yourself to our fine community here?
More importantly, besides being a former councilmember, I am in the current chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and that's why I'm here this evening.
And we thank you for all the wonderful things you have done in the past and continue to do. And we have a project in the south of Gilbert called our South Regional Park that Les, with his leadership, has been helping out in navigating through all that, and we look forward to breaking ground this fall. So that's a fun thing. So anyways, Les, Arbor Day. Do you know much about Arbor Day?
It has something to do with trees.
Well, it has something to do with trees, and we have this fantastic proclamation that we like to honor you with and the team. And I'll be glad to read this. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood, and our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products; whereas trees in our city, I should say town, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community; and whereas trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Daniels of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day. And Les, thank you.
As we prepare for Agenda Item 3, there are several other proclamations and recognitions that did go out via mail in most cases, and those are listed on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to recognize any of the Town of Gilbert volunteers that are in the room. I know Mr. Les Presnick is one of them. If you could come down and join me. Are there any other board, commission, police, fire committees? Thanks for coming in tonight. Hi. Well, Les just introduced himself, so let's have you introduce. Sure. Please, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Noah Mont. I'm the president of the Water Department Municipal Property Corporation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Volunteers are an important part of our community, and we wanted to make sure that we recognized National Volunteer Week. So whereas volunteers are one of our community's greatest assets, continuing to give back to the Gilbert Police Department, Gilbert Fire and Rescue Department, and numerous boards, commissions, committees, and foundations; whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient; and whereas volunteers serve the committee -community with pride and commitment; and whereas volunteers work to ensure Gilbert, Arizona, is a great place to live, work, and raise a family; and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation and community; and whereas the mayor and town council are proud of and thankful for the volunteers that serve our community. Now, therefore, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim April 15 through the 22, 2018, as National Volunteer Recognition Week. Thank you for all you do.
Councilmember Jordan Ray, you're up.
All right, let's invite up the Lady Spartans and their coaches. Come on up, come on up. In Gilbert, we have many great schools. We don't have a lot of schools that get to hold a trophy like this one. And if she turns around, that is a trophy for the state champion, 2A Lady Spartans. Congratulations, ladies. All right, I'm going to give the microphone down to the coach. We're going to have the coach tell us just a little bit about the season, and then if we could have each one of the assistant coaches and team members introduce themselves and tell us what position you played.
Hi, my name's Eric Gray. I'm the head coach of these ladies here from Leading Edge Academy. We had a great season this year of 27 and 4. We, basically, last year or two years ago, we lost in the state championship game, and it was kind of our goal all year long to get back to the state championship game and finish what we started the previous year. We wrote on our weight room, on the board in our weight room, the score of the previous year's game, and that was kind of our motivation. So this was a year-long process, and for some of these girls that have been in our high school, it's been a four-year process, obviously, but for them to do what they've done, to get where they are, and hoist that trophy at the end of the season, they did a great job. We have, we had six seniors on our team, and five of our six seniors have signed to play college athletics somewhere. So that's a huge, huge accomplishment for them in and of themselves. So we're super proud of all the girls, but especially our seniors who are going to be moving on and continuing their careers.
Hi, my name is Morgan Smith, and I play post.
Hi, my name's Adiana Clavelle. I'm center.
Hi, my name's Carly Smith, and I'm a forward.
Hi, my name is Zari Tuert, and I'm a guard.
Hi, my name is Asia Sample, and I played a guard.
Hi, my name is Ash.
My name's Emily, and I played power forward.
My name's Mariah Shaw, and I play shooting guard.
My name's Carla, and I play a forward.
And my name is Coach Justin Corals. I don't play, but I am the assistant, I'm the assistant varsity coach and the head JV coach at Leading Edge Academy.
So we have a certificate for them. I won't read it. We've talked about how great they are, and we know that they're going to be back here again in a year to celebrate the back-to-back state championships. But to Lady Spartans, from the town council, from the mayor, we say congratulations. Great work. We're proud of you.
There's a lot of energy in that group. I loved it. At this time, we will hear from communications from citizens, and I look to our vice mayor to assist.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have one request to speak during communications from citizens. That would be Mr. Joe Guusik. Please come to the podium and give us your Town of Residence.
Joe Guusik, proud Gilbert resident. Mayor Daniels, town council members, all Gilbert staff, residents, and guests of our beautiful community. As I said, my name's Joe Guusik, and I'm the lovable, slightly annoying American. I'm the education Lorax. And as I told you, I was going to speak a lot, and I'm going to keep speaking a lot. So let's move on with the next thing here. As I challenged the governor and I challenged the state-elected officials, I asked them what was their total compensation statement. I haven't gotten one of them to reply back to me. To have an honest conversation about budgets in any sector, in all sectors, we need to know our total compensation. As you can see from that document in front of you, this is how we should build these compensation statements for the private sector and the public sector as well. As I ask you, as you serve and lead this organization, that I'd like to know your total compensation, the total compensation. What I mean by that is your pay, your per diem, your mileage, and also, on the other side, the employer match of things. And I think that is really where the conversation should always be, out there, transparent for everybody to see. I don't want anybody to ever feel, in the private or the public sector, that somebody's being taken advantage of. And I do believe, from what I saw at UPS, they've been doing it for the past 35 years. And they work with non-union and union groups to communicate to over 400,000 employees, and they do it more effectively and efficiently than any other group I've ever seen in the history of the world. So I ask you to really take a look at this. If you're not getting one, you should, and you should ask your employees to understand it. As I've been asking others to do this, you might want to take a look at a little video from our Gilbert Public Schools, because they're listening. Now, they call it their total rewards. So I, once again, I ask you to do it, and I'm going to ask the governor and the state-elected officials to do it, and the county, and everybody, because it's time to have that bigger discussion and understand, is everybody being paid a fair day's wage for a fair day's effort? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. There has been a special request, so at the accommodation of council, there is an individual here for Item 22 who is double-booked tonight, and so if it's okay with the council, I'll move that forward now. I'd like to open the public hearing on Agenda Item 22, and look to the council if you have any comments, questions, or concerns tonight. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 2 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 22 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. We'll call that the one-time courtesy. How about that? You're welcome. All right, that moves us to our consent calendar, and I look to the vice mayor to assist.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a few requests to have a couple of items polled, so I'm just going to go through what we're leaving on consent at this point. If I miss something, please speak up. Item number 5, number 6, number 7, number 9, A, B, and C, number 11, A, B, and C, number 12, number 14, A and B, number 15, number 16, number 17, with modifications that were in our packet, would be for consent this evening. I would move to approve those.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, and that leads us to, I believe, Agenda Item 6A. Sure. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, thank you. I know there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and I want to express appreciation. I know that the staff is working very hard to make the best use of the facility that we own there in the downtown that's designed to be a university building. I think the real high points of this agreement are that it's a fair market value lease, and you really can't ask for more than that. And I know that we've kind of put our feelers out there for selling the facility. I think we need to continue to push for that as quickly as possible. I don't think it's good for us to be in the business of building university buildings and then leasing them out. And I know that's not the intent, but to that, to that end, I think we need to continue to push to sell it as quickly as possible. I appreciate the fact that the lease includes provisions to allow us that flexibility to sell it even before the end of the term. That does lead me to my one concern, and this isn't to say I'm going to approve it, because I really think this is the best thing for, for our taxpayers, to make the value, the biggest return on investment as quickly as possible, I think, is to move on this. But I am somewhat concerned that because the tenants' rights do transfer with the sell, that we have to find a buyer before the end of the lease, if it's before the end of this lease period, who is willing to accept that there is a tenant there who has rights until that expires. So I just put that out there, that I hope that doesn't hamper us too much. We have to keep that in mind. But I do hope that we can get this fully filled and/or sold as quickly as possible. And again, I thank staff for their work on it.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. Couple of, couple of thoughts here. First off, just a little bit of concern on some of the provisions in the lease agreement. The, and we've only had a couple of days to kind of look at this, so a little bit frustrated that we haven't had a ton of information on this, but I do appreciate some of the work. We've tried to scramble on it, but I know it's, we've tried to get as much cost recovery as possible on this. We haven't quite got there, but having the taxpayers still carry the MNO on this and looking at the run rate of that, I know we'll get more tenants in, and hopefully that'll offset, but it certainly looks like the current run rate will almost be a push of, you know, what we're continuing to pay on the MNO versus what we might be getting in lease for this one. Having, having expressed some of those concerns, and Patrick, I really wish we could get this earlier. I didn't think we had our A-game on this. Changing to Park University, that's a big positive in us, and I do want to thank them for considering our town. I think what they're bringing in here is a huge plus, and it's going to create some great options and opportunities, and had great discussion with some of their leadership today, Mayor, and appreciate the time they took with some of the very direct, specific questions on it. Councilmember Cook joined me on that, and got some great opportunities. So notwithstanding, you know, to me, it's like you get, you want 80% of something or 100% of nothing. It's kind of like that's the situation we're in right now. I'm going to take the 80% of something, because I think what Park University is bringing is very positive. I think it has a great runway in our community. The downtown location is, and the building, obviously, is really great, so I'm really looking forward to them and, you know, just for our town management and staff. If we could see some of these details a little bit earlier, I think that would help give you guys a little bit more feedback on that, and just appreciate that, because I know we have some good momentum with some other people to round out the building. So Mayor, thank you for the time, but I will be voting in support of the proposed amendment as worded, proposed motion as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook.
Mayor, thank you. And thanks on behalf of the council for allowing us to speak with the Parks leadership today. The one thing that's really nice about this whole process is that we're able to basically look at kind of a humble restart, because there was no doubt we had worked as a team on the prior university, and all the things that Councilmember Taylor talked about as it relates to cost recovery, the MNO, all of that was all baked in to the original operator. And unfortunately, you know, we'll call it a unfortunate perfect storm of different events that happened. We're no longer in that relationship. But as it began, as I look at it, as a new humble beginning, a new start, and speaking with the Parks leadership, I envision that this is going to kick off really well. You know, this could actually grow to where they may actually eventually occupy the entire building, but they're going to get a good start here, good footprint. They have some fantastic ideas. They also have expanded a lot of their offerings across the country with a lot of different military bases that they offer, a lot of this education. So it's a good start. We'll hopefully be able to work in good partnership with them, and we'll see, you know, as time goes on, you know, how they expand into the region. So I'm very excited for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Any additional comments from council? We do have one request to speak on this agenda item, and it is Christina Cursoe. Christine, you want to come to the podium? There'll be three minutes. The yellow light will indicate when there's 30 seconds left. And also, if you could state that you are a Gilbert resident. I know that.
Thank you. I don't need three minutes, that's for sure. Thank you, Mayor Daniels, and members of the council. I just have one brief comment about this building, and just to kind of reiterate something that was already said, as a taxpayer, and my family would really love to see this building sold as soon as possible. That's our desire. And just a note to council in the future, to have great caution and better vet public-private partnerships, please, before we get put in this situation again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional comments from council? Okay, I believe we are prepared to vote. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Item 6A.
Mayor, a second.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, and on this, we're going to call it momentous occasion, because this is a milestone for us as a council. This has been a goal of this council and of our management, to see tenants succeed in this building. But I do have a message from the president of Park University, who's unable to be with us tonight, but is anxiously awaiting the opening of Park University. I'll just read this briefly. It's just a couple of sentences. It says, "Park University is excited about this new partnership agreement between the Town of Gilbert and Park. We look forward to opening our new campus center in downtown Gilbert and creating higher education opportunities for Gilbert residents, employees, and business partners. I regret that I could not attend the signing ceremony in person," but he did enclose in with this a pen that he hoped we would use for the signing. It was a very neat pen, and it was actually, I think, pretty heartfelt. It was made from the oldest tree that existed on campus that was there when the campus was founded in the late 1800s, and it's, it will be a treasure for this community, and we'll make sure it's put on display for the entire community to see. So thank you to the council for encouraging progress in our university building and for supporting the vision to bring higher education opportunities to the community and also to our neighboring communities. There are simply not enough higher education opportunities in the state of Arizona. If you look at the numbers and the projections as we move forward, we desperately need in this state higher education opportunities throughout different universities, and so I'm proud to say that the Town of Gilbert is a partner and a forward thinker in making sure that there are opportunities here, right here, for our residents. So thank you. That moves us to another agenda item that's been polled, Agenda Item 8.
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to share with the council, I, you know, this is obviously an area of expertise that I have, and I just wanted to share my findings on this. So when SXU was no longer occupying the facility, SXU bought a lot of infrastructure within the building. It wasn't part of the original bond of the building, and part of the infrastructure was related to IT gear. And when, when they departed the town, they did take some of that gear back home. They actually purchased the gear. I'm not sure the reason why they only took some of it and left some of it there, but while we are waiting and looking for, obviously, new operators, and we've had a number of events at the university building, some of that gear has been used for operating some of the equipment, like air conditioning that requires internet connections and so forth, and lighting and so forth. And I know that the town has been using that gear and has actually been paying a little bit of a fee for the use of the St. Xavier gear. So the intent of this particular agenda item is to return all of the gear back to St. Xavier. This particular gear is only going to be used for the town. It's not going to be used by any of the operators that occupy the building. So Park University will actually have to put their own IT gear in the building, and this gear is specifically used for the town to operate some of those, you know, like air conditioning and whatever things that need to be done will be operated by the town. And in fact, the town will not even be the IT team for any of the university operators in the future. They have to staff their own, they have to find their way to get connections of the internet into the building. So this here is just to basically provide our own gear, return the St. Xavier gear back, and then be specifically only used for the town activities, you know, and so forth. So I'm good with this particular agenda item and to move forward with that.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. I've been trying to keep up on the responses. I don't know if I heard the one, the question I did, and Eddie just touched on it, is how are we going to support the, I mean, because we own this infrastructure, we're buying it, so our team has to maintain it at some level, but you're right, maybe at the, in the computer lab, if that's owned by Park or another university, they're going to do that. This might be a question for our town manager. I mean, what's, what's the initial thinking in terms of how are we going to support the infrastructure that's owned by us, and then partner with them on any supplementary for their computer labs and things like that? Are we going to see any additional headcount in the budget that we need to support? Could you maybe touch on that a little?
You know, actually, I might be able to answer that. This particular gear is a very unique piece of gear that I'm very familiar with. Once it's installed, I know, I may take your expertise in IT here, Patrick, but I think I have one up on you here. This, this particular gear was amazing. It's all cloud-based. They literally will just set this up from a physical perspective, and they can manage this remotely through the cloud. It's a fantastic type of technology, and in fact, when we, let's say, down the road, sell the building, that type of gear will actually be sold with the new, we'll say, tenant, and basically, because it's cloud-based, anyone can actually take ownership of that.
Well, thank you. So we don't anticipate any additional headcount needed to service this that you're seeing, Patrick?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, no. We will provide this base level of equipment, but all responsibility for maintenance of any of the IT equipment, software in the building will be up to the individual tenants.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the time for the question.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I approve that, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 8.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That moves us to agenda item 10. Councilmembers?
Mayor, no need for discussion. Certainly support training and resources for firefighters, just not a fan of the source here. Just wanted to pull it so we could vote separately.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 10.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That technically on the agenda moves us to agenda item 13, and we do have a request to speak on agenda item 13. I actually expect that this to be a fairly lengthy discussion from the council. And so, again, with the purview of council, I know there's some members of the public that are here for other agenda items that are on the public hearing calendar. I look to the council for the ability to do some public hearing items first. Okay, thank you. So, we will open the public hearing. Are there any items that council wishes to speak on, on the public hearing items? Which one? 21. And 23 has been removed from our agenda. And 22 we've taken care of. So, this will be pretty efficient. So, I will open the public hearing on 18, 19, 20, and 24, 25, and 26. I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. That moves us to agenda item 21. I will open the public hearing on agenda item 21.
Mayor, I asked to speak on that one, just really briefly. First of all, I want to thank staff for all the work they've done with the LDC. I mean, everything I've seen, and there's lots of hours that have gone into this, everything I've seen has been a great improvement. It's added clarity, it's added convenience, it's made a lot of common sense. I think we've maintained, preserved, and even expanded, you know, property rights while still respecting others. And so, I think, all in all, it's great. Really, really appreciate it. I had prepared some language to amend, to add just a tweak related to the accessory structure placement. After consulting with legal staff and with the planning, some planning staff members, I've decided to pass around an agenda item separate because, well, the idea here is good, meaning that we provide an opportunity for people to get a little closer to the property line if none of the neighbors mind. Okay, that's the concept, is really simple. So, the idea of keeping a buffer there is just to keep neighbors from feeling too crowded and too imposed upon. But if nobody cares, there's no reason not to allow people a little more flexibility, in my mind, anyway. And so, I think the concept is good and it's sound, but legally, we have to think about how to do that, where we're not delegating authority inappropriately to residents. And, you know, there's still a process and things that make sense. We may apply something similar to kind of a conditional use permit mindset to some of this. And so, I wanted staff to have some time and some time for feedback, too, from the public. So, I'm going to hand this around. I actually had two other council members, yes, that's as far as I could go without breaking open meeting law, totally in line with what I was trying to do, but hopefully I'll at least get two other signatures to get this on an agenda. So, just wanted to pull that to explain it and to kind of pave the way. I'm thinking of council, I asked legal what they thought was reasonable, and May 17th was the date I'm proposing, and I think that gives some time for feedback and whatnot. So, I'll be passing that around. Thank you, Mayor.
So, just to clarify, Councilmember Peterson, you would like us to not adopt that portion of the zoning that's in our agenda tonight, or would you like to move forward and then have another discussion?
No, Mayor, let's adopt as it is. I'm just saying that we'll be coming back, addressing a section that we're actually changing tonight, but just to give it a little more time.
Excellent. And I would like to actually provide some maybe additional feedback. When you think about a six-foot-tall accessory structure, that's not very tall. That probably only fits like me. You guys are all taller than me. Oh, you're about my height, so we're good. You and me can fit in the six-foot accessory structure, but Eddie with his hat could never fit into a six-foot accessory structure. And so, I would like to have some discussion about what is a reasonable height with which, at what point should we sort of have that dialogue? So, again, I would support that as well. So, with that, I will, any other additional comments from council? On agenda item 21, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us now back to agenda item 13, which I'm happy to introduce here. And we do have one request to speak on this agenda item. So, if it's okay with council, we will begin with the public comment. And we invite Christina Cursoe back up to the podium. If you could again state that you're a Gilbert resident in three minutes.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the second chance to speak tonight. I just wanted to state that, yeah, and I am a Gilbert resident. Thank you. Listening to your discussion on the dais, on this specific issue over the past few months, I just wanted to mention, a lot of the comments that Councilman Taylor has made on this issue has really resonated with me and my husband. And so, I just wanted to affirm those comments. I very much appreciate your time and energy that you spend serving our community, and I know you don't do this for the money. I know Mayor Daniels said that a couple of times in the last few meetings. Of course you don't. So, if this is the case, and you're all doing this for the right reasons, which I sincerely believe that you are, then I think this issue would probably be an easy one to resolve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, I believe this was your agenda item that you requested to have on the agenda, so maybe we could start with you tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And thanks to staff for getting it on the agenda. So, I'll just restate, just to kind of tee things up here. Topic is council pay. We've had this visited a couple of times. Bottom line, let me just state two points here. Number one, as I stated before, my perspective on our time here as elected officials is a matter of service. This isn't a job. So, that's the framework that I look at this from. And when I think of service, I don't think of asking for anything but our expenses covered. And that's kind of the second point, which is where I see, you know, any kind of remuneration or compensation for services, get the costs covered. But when you're serving the community, I believe that's appropriate. So, I know we weren't aware of the 2007 action that was in the document. I think we probably would have made a different decision, you know, at the time. So, the mistake was made. I think we rectified some of that in the last time we visited this, in terms of detaching an automatic raise for council with, you know, any employee increases. And so, what I'm asking, Mayor, is that we just fix that mistake, roll that back to the prior level that we had, just similar to the motion that I made before. I think that's appropriate. So, I appreciate that we have the chance to talk a little bit about it tonight.
Just for clarity, can you say what those dollar amounts are?
Let me pull that up here. Give me one minute. We were blessed with a 2,400-page packet for those following the meeting here, so...
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
It was 21,012 for the council.
21,012, that's right.
Wait till you see next ones.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll talk to you, Patrick.
I think that's actually a great point. It's a massive amount of work for this council and the mayor to go through these documents and to ensure that we're voting in an appropriate way. So, I actually think it's a perfect example of the time commitment that is asked from all of us. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor.
I've got it here. I'm sorry, you have the floor.
Go for it, go for it.
Okay. So, Mayor, I'm looking at the, on page 2 of 17 for this particular agenda item, there's a table. So, I'm looking at the July 2008 staffing levels to be rolled back to. I believe that was the level of pay that we had prior to doing something that we didn't know we were doing.
Thank you.
If you want me to state the dollar amount, I'm happy to, but that's the reference there.
Councilmember Ray?
So, we've talked about this a couple of times as a council, and we've, people have expressed different opinions in different times. And whether this is the appropriate amount of money, whether it's not, how much do we work, how much do we not work? I'll give a couple of examples here on the council. Everyone puts in different amounts of times. There are some council members who are at everything. There are some council members who aren't at very many town events. Last year, I started a new business. Fortunately, it was very successful, and it took me away from town meetings a number of times. Have since hired people, and now it's under control, and attendance has been great the last six months. And since then, other council members have missed, you know, a third of all the meetings. And so, it comes and goes with schedule. So, I don't want to get in an argument of who works hardest and what's it worth. When all is said and done, every member of this council, I believe, loses money by being on the council. You don't ever make more money by being on the council. I think if any one of us put more effort into our day jobs, we would make more money than we would on council. With all that being said, I'm of the opinion that we move the council pay back to the $21,012, and we keep the mayor's pay where it is today. I don't think anyone on this council can argue that they work as hard as the mayor does. And is the mayor's job truly a full-time job? Probably, but it's definitely more than part-time. And frankly, I think the mayor should probably be paid. And this isn't just Jen Daniels, but I've had the chance to work with Mayor Lewis, and he may have even worked more than Mayor Daniels, I'm not sure. But that, I think, needs to stay where it's at, and I think that we should have future discussions on raising that so that we can make sure we're always, that people don't, people are able to be mayor without having to not work full-time. And so, my recommendation tonight, and the way that I like to see this go, is that we move the council pay back, but we keep the mayor's pay where it's at.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, Jared, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Taylor and I are 100% on the same page when it comes to council salary, and it sounds like Councilmember Ray and I are as well on that. I do, and I'm surprised, I'm going to surprise some of my conservative friends, hopefully not disappoint them too badly. I have no dog in the fight, I have no agenda. Let me tell you my thinking. My thinking is, the council job is a part-time job. I think you can do a decent job on the council and have a full-time job to the side of that. I think you can. I think it's reasonable. However, I do not think you can have a full-time job and be the mayor and do a decent job. I just, I don't think practically it's possible. That being the case, I don't feel the same way about the council salary as I do the mayor's salary. So, I'm actually in agreement with Councilmember Ray. And no, I'm not planning on running for mayor. I could never win that race, trust me. I got no aspirations for that. I just think from a point of practicality, I can't with a straight face tell you that I think you could support yourself with a full-time job and also be at the mayor at the same time. I just, I don't think it's doable. I think Mayor Lewis tried, and in fact, he had to resign from his full-time position working. And that guy worked more hours than, you know, I've been awake for my whole life, you know what I mean? I don't know how he did it. But I just think from a point of practicality, it's probably decent to have the mayor's salary be about twice with the councils. I think that makes sense to me. So, with that, those are my comments.
Councilmember Cook?
Well, two of my colleagues actually said pretty much what I said the last time, that to me, the mayor's position, that salary, in my mind, should be adjusted. In fact, I remember having this discussion with Mayor Lewis, and I think he twisted my arm and said, "You better not bring that up because I won't agree to that." So, Mayor Daniels, I'm looking at you because you're probably like Mayor Lewis, and you probably wouldn't want to do this. But it is important for the future because we've seen what Mayor Lewis did. He was fantastic. He was in a fantastic job with Apollo Group. His leadership team at Apollo Group, you know, made every accommodation for him. And as we know, Mayor Lewis gives 110% in all areas. And you just don't have, you don't have 220% to give. And it was really, like I said, for him and his family to sacrifice based upon his commitment to our community and our service. I'm sad that he would not allow us to make this decision back when. So, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Ray, Councilmember Peterson, on getting us back to the council at 21,12, keeping your salary where it's at. I know you probably won't like it, but it's not about you. Maybe it is about you, but anyhow, it really is, I think, the position is almost a full-time job. We're going to be the fourth-largest community here in the state of Arizona. I think that we're going to have a build-out here in the next 10 to 20 years where that position will probably turn into a full-time position. So, anyways, I'm in favor of that.
Thanks, Mayor Peterson.
Mayor, thank you. I agree with everything that's been said here tonight, especially Councilmember Ray, when he mentioned that a lot of us probably lose money doing this job. I choose to not accept the health benefits, and my husband actually has to pay $100 a month to his company as a fee because I don't take the health benefits here. So, we spend $1,200 a year to save the town money, in essence, to save the town money because I don't accept the health benefit. So, it's very true that in some cases, we are losing money to be in this position. I never volunteered or ran for this office expecting any pay or wanting any pay or looking forward to how much I was going to make here in this position. It's never been a big deal to me, and I have said that all along. This was something that popped up that none of us knew about, and I, when you say that you can have a full-time job and do a decent job in this position, you can. You can do a decent job, or you can maybe not have a full-time job like myself and do an even better job in this position. And I think it's up to each individual and how they approach the position and how they choose to do it. I averaged out my hours for the past three months because I knew this conversation was coming, and I averaged 59 to 60 hours a month of just meetings and events. And that doesn't include travel time, time returning emails, phone calls, or reading a 2,400-page packet. It doesn't include any of that. So, I just want people to know that that goes into this position. But I fully agree with what's been said here, and I fully agree with keeping the mayor's salary. I mean, she and I were here most of the day yesterday. I saw several other council members here during the day yesterday. I was here for at least eight hours yesterday, just one day. And I don't think people realize that, but we are a very active, very busy, very growing community. And one of the things that our residents love most about this community is the small-town feel. And one of the things that offers that small-town feel is that when you go to a ribbon-cutting for a very small business, your mayor, or your vice mayor, or your council members are there to help cut that ribbon. It makes a huge difference in this community. So, I will be voting with my fellow council members.
Councilmember Taylor? Sorry, Councilmember Anderson, did you wish to speak? I didn't see your hand up. I apologize.
All right. Just very quickly, I thought we settled this a couple of months ago, and we were just ratifying what we settled. I'm just happy to be here and serve. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. And I'm happy that he's here, too. It was probably the most polite race that we ran. You know, we were competitors, but we were friends, and anyways. I appreciate all the thoughts, and even more, I appreciate the respectful nature that we've approached this matter with. This could easily blow up quite a bit, and do respect the opinions on it. I do see that, you know, there's lots of people that look at it as a position, a job, and that's okay. I respect that viewpoint. I just want to throw out, one of the reasons why I feel strong about this, and it goes back to my love for Dr. Benjamin Franklin. And one of the principles that he was pretty adamant about, and why the founders, Madison in particular, had the amendment that Congress can't raise its own pay, it was one of the 11th or 12th amendment that actually wasn't ratified in the original 10, but a law student at the University of Texas found it in the 90s, and it became the last amendment on raising Congress pay. Very interesting. But in the discussions, what Dr. Franklin taught was that when you take a position of power and a position of profit, and you put it together, that plays on the worst of human nature. Right? And that principle is the basis of separation of... And that principle is the basis of separation of powers in the federal government, horizontal and vertical. They knew that mankind through history abuses power and tries to consolidate it. And then, when you pour financial incentive on it, it even, it's just gas on the fire. And so, that's why they always had lots of reservations on, you know, high pay for Congress or high pay for elected officials. And I'm not saying whichever proposals we go for is getting us there, but I think we can agree that some of the highest-paying city councils have some of the worst-run cities. And I just hate to set our town up for that trend, that we just can't deny in world history that when you take power and, in this council, all political power in the town resides in this council. We do not have a tricameral government. That's just the way it's designed. So, it's all here. And so, I guess I just don't want to set us up. I just love that wisdom. I think it's something that we should consider. So, I won't be supporting that, but I respected the viewpoints and thought I would just share that thought. And may I appreciate the time again.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I just want to compliment councilmember Taylor on his love for the Constitution and the history of our country. I certainly share that. And I, and I wholeheartedly agree with the principles he's just discussed. I really look at what I'm talking about here for the mayor's salary as just what you said, really a way to recover costs. I just, I think about, you know, there's certain people that maybe they don't work or they're retired or supported some other way that could probably serve as a mayor with the salary being, you know, much lower. I understand that. But when I think about who I would like to have be able to serve as mayor and as councilmembers, I want people who have experience, work, you know, in private sector, who have to have jobs, who have that experience and may still need to be in the thick of that and still serving. I think there's value there in representation with the kind of people that would be in office. I think that's valuable. I think we gain a lot more than we lose by making sure that the salary is enough that somebody could, you know, maybe work a part-time job to help supplement, you know what I mean? The mayor thing is maybe not quite full-time salary, but maybe they could supplement with a part-time job. It's conceivable, even then, it's really hard to imagine with as many hours as the mayor gets in. So, I just don't want to make it impossible for people who have to support a family or others to serve in that position. And so, that's my concern. And so, anyway, I just, again, I want to thank you for your comments on that. And we may depart slightly on this, but I think in principle, we really do agree.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. And I think I'll offer my final comments, first of all. I just want to make it really clear that even in, under our current ordinance, we actually cannot raise our own pay. So, I fully agree with the statement that you've made, absolutely. Power and money mixed together is a dangerous combination and I, we've all seen it. But we, as a council, actually cannot increase our own pay during our own cycle. It would have to be the following election cycle. That's in our code and that's solidly in our code and we're not debating that. I just want to make that clear, that that is not part of this. The 2007 ordinance that none of us were aware of, that we found out about because someone was in good conscience going through our ordinances to ensure that we were in compliance with all of our ordinances in the town. And that's a regular check that we did, that we do found this ordinance, realized that we were out of compliance with our own law. And that is how this change was made. So, this was, in fact, I remember very clearly some of the discussion that occurred and it was, can we decline it? It was, can we say no? No, this is an ordinance. This is a law within the town that was voted on by previous councils. So, there's been some conversation about windfalls and, you know, lining our pockets and things to that nature. And those are false statements and I want to call them out as false statements. This is not something that any of us designed. None of us were on the council at that time. So, we can, I believe, decrease our pay? Or does it always have to wait till the next election cycle?
It has to wait, per the Constitution, until the next--
Okay. So, even if we vote on this, this actually doesn't take place until January of next year. And I just want to make sure that's clear because we cannot either increase or decrease our pay as councilmembers. And I believe that's rightfully, that's rightfully so. I believe that that is intact and should be intact. So, I just want to clarify that that's not what we're doing tonight. And with that, councilmember Ray.
I'll make one comment. Anyone on the council who doesn't want to keep this money till their term is over, the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program is a great place to put it. And we can help out the nonprofits in Gilbert. But with that being said, I move for budget, for item number 13, that we decrease the council pay back to its number of $21,012 and that we continue with the mayor's pay as it stands today.
I'll second that.
Just to clarify, effective after the next election?
Effective whenever it's legal.
Mayor, can I ask a question on this? If I may. So, in the last, the last time we visited this, how was, if this can't be effective now, how were we able to set it the last time? Was that because it was already there? Or, I'm not sure why we could have taken the last action if we're prohibited and--
It's because we removed the previous ordinance. We changed it to be the exact amount that it was effective, the previous ordinance. We just detached it from any increase in staff pay.
But we had, that was one action. We had two. The other one was to set the pay. And that's where I had a motion, you amended it.
It was already set there. That was the pay. So, it was the exact same amount.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is how, when I talked to you, Chris, earlier, my motion that brought it back seemed to be in order. Maybe I just misunderstood that.
So, Mayor, councilmember Taylor, what happened at the December 21st meeting is the passage of an ordinance that took away that automatic adjustment. It set the pay at that then-current rate, which for the mayor was $43,361 and for council, And then, on that same meeting, council passed a resolution that set a future pay decrease effective January 2019 for the mayor to be $43,000 and for the council be $24,000. So, if there's no action taken tonight, that's what the pay will be for the mayor and council effective January 2019.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you. I believe that moves us to a special presentation. Agenda item 27. Dan Henderson, you are carrying the water on this one tonight. We probably were so efficient from a timing standpoint that Mayor Lewis, he's probably at Gilbert in Guadalupe? Is that where? Gilbert and Elliott?
Lindsey and Elliott.
Yeah. He had favorite intersections in Gilbert. Dan Henderson, our Economic Development Director, will assist.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dan Henderson and I serve as the Economic Development Director. I'm here this evening to give you a brief presentation about the Phoenix East Valley Angel Investor Initiative. Mayor, council, this is a, an initiative that was really talked about from a East Valley Partnership perspective. The following slide is really a brief overview of who East Valley Partnership is and the role that they serve and the services that they provide. I know that John Lewis, had he been here, would want to talk about this, particularly in terms of the services that he provides through the East Valley Partnership. But specifically, these services are provided in the Phoenix East Valley geographic region. John Lewis often says, "Feedback is like a gift." And what I'd like to briefly mention about that is that the Phoenix East Valley Partnership, when John Lewis joined on as a, as the CEO of the organization, he immediately responded to that service by asking the economic development directors in the East Valley region, "How can East Valley Partnership best assist you?" And looking at all the different services being provided by the various economic development entities, not only in the region, the state, but certainly at each local municipality, we said, "If you'd like to help, one of the areas in particular that you could assist us is in the area of capital, primarily focused on angel investment or what we call access to early-stage funding." As we begin to look at that, that service and that initiative, we quickly draw upon the ecosystem that exists in the Phoenix East Valley. And certainly, that ecosystem is rooted very heavily in innovation and technology. And we feel that the Southwest and the Phoenix East Valley has great potential for the high-tech startup growth and really serves as that hub in the Southwest. Many of the pieces from a technology and innovation perspective are already in place to support this initiative, in particular, tech sector, a very strong and robust workforce, certainly higher education, innovation emphasis through our employers and certainly the education attainment of those employees that work in these employers. We have various tech shops, incubators, accelerators, and other initiatives that are taking place that assist small and emerging startup companies. Coworking spaces certainly work to assist in that effort as well. But as stated, one of the gaps that the East Valley was lacking was really this access to early-stage funding. And we feel that it's still needed and we decided to collaborate with the Phoenix East Valley Partnership to assist in this area. And if I might briefly explain sort of what that early funding area or what that access to early-stage capital really is. It's in that $200,000 range and above. Looking at $200,000, going up to about $1 million in valuation is where seed or angel investment typically comes into play and assists those small and emerging companies. And so, we wanted not to necessarily attack this at just a local level, but thought a regional initiative would serve in the best interest of the Phoenix East Valley. And so, the Phoenix East Valley Angel Investor Initiative really has three goals. First, raise awareness of the importance of angel investing. Second, build an angel network with active investors. And third, increase angel funding to area startups. The strategy that we would like to deploy is really a sort of marketing the initiative, getting the word out, engaging individuals and investors and others to provide education so that they understand where their capital can be placed, how it can be used, and really provide some education on that investing process through the forms of workshops. We'd like to conduct those workshops in each of the different Phoenix East Valley locations, Gilbert included. Chandler, I should say, was the first location for the workshops. Gilbert is being proposed as the second area for the workshops. And we're looking at a May 1 start date, carrying on into another sort of seminar on May 16th and then concluding at June, on June 16th. Mesa will serve as the third or next community and that initiative would pick up next fall. The intent, again, from a strategy perspective, is market the initiative, but really recruit new angel investors that can support our regional technology ecosystem and new startups. So, I briefly described who angels are. What I'd like to do is give you a little bit more information about who are these angels. They are often successful women and men, entrepreneurs and retirees. These individuals would invest money in seed, startup and early-stage companies and certainly invest their time in the form of coaching, providing business acumen, mentoring. They would serve on boards of these small to medium-sized enterprises and make business introductions so that money can be best utilized and resources can be best deployed. We then wanted to explain to you real quickly what an angel profile looks like. So, again, an angel profile meets Security and Exchange Commission's accredited investor definition. So, again, the SEC has an accredited investor definition. And so, these individuals typically have a net worth of a million or more. They have an annual personal income of $200,000 or a family income of $300,000 or more. Some of the assumptions are that these individuals can provide knowledgeable expertise as well as being capable of due diligence and to be able to understand from a portfolio perspective if this is a business that they would like to invest in. Moreover, these individuals, it would be assumed, could afford to lose invested funds. What's important here is, is not our speculation. This is how the SEC credits investors that would serve as angels. So, next, we wanted to address why angels would invest. Each angel is motivated by a different set of factors, certainly. Some, again, would like to help entrepreneurs. Some would like to stay, stay in sort of a coaching or a mentoring type of role. They would like to stay engaged in the companies and continue to use their skills and expertise and their business acumen in helping these businesses grow and prosper. Sometimes, these individuals like to give back to their local community. They are often interested in an active form of investing beyond just real estate and more importantly, don't just simply watch markets, rather they like to get involved. And finally, these angels like to invest because certainly they want to generate a return on investment. So, next, we define some of the team roles that are involved in this network. Certainly, as Gilbert Municipality, we would be a team role player and our role specifically would be to market and recruit. We would use Team Gilbert and the expertise of Team Gilbert. Any individuals listening tonight, certainly any of you, certainly any of you in the audience--
Those slides have not been--
And I understand that. Yes, yeah. And so, what we are specifically, specifically asking of Team Gilbert this evening is that we would need workshop attendees. And so, what we'd like to do is engage you, engage the community, engage our stakeholders and officially ask them to serve on the recruiting team. Use their contacts, their marketing materials and handouts and certainly leverage additional information and insight through an investphoenixeastvalley.org website or more specifically, We think by identifying, educating and activating these individuals, we can build that startup funding, develop ongoing support. And through this startup funding and this ongoing support, the Phoenix East Valley Angel Network has been created. And so, again, these would start up on May 1st, carry through to May 16th and conclude on June 16th in the Gilbert community. Mayor and council, at this point in time, I'd like to bring up John Lewis to provide a little bit of background on the East Valley Partnership and/or address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dan. You did a great job. Let's call it pinch hitting here. Mayor Lewis, when you walked in, we all smiled.
I think Dan needs a big round of applause.
Mayor, would you like me to give him 30 seconds?
I think we will yield the floor to Mayor Lewis.
And in Cambodian, please. Oh, in Cambodian? Okay. It is a pleasure to be here with this group and to Mayor and council. Thank you for taking a few minutes. As Dan may have mentioned, we have, one of the committees we work with is the Economic Development Directors. And it was near the end of 2016, and this might be a slight repeat, that in a meeting with the Economic Development Directors, we said, "What could we be doing to help?" We were thinking that they might be talking about workforce development and that's when they said, "Capital." And it took a few months of brainstorming and that's where we came back and said, "What about an idea to educate the region and help identify some angel investors?" As a council, you're very familiar with Infusionsoft. That would be an example where they went from that stage of their garage, of their own personal funding, then families started to fund them, they got a little bit bigger. And in order to get to the next step of growth, they needed some capital. In this case, it was angel investing. And as Dan described, some of the great aspects of angel investors in a region is that you'll have individuals that are looking for investments that might be a little more risky, but at the same time, they're at a point in their careers, their lives where they could do that. that, and at the same time, build the region. And they're very much passionate and interested in doing that because, in many cases, they did likewise, and they want to build the region. And so the process of trying to identify angel investors, we tried out in the city of Chandler, and it was very successful. About half of the individuals who came, came from social media that was done by East Valley Partnership, and the other half came from the connections of their council. And their council was so interested and engaged that they started attending the workshops themselves, and you're invited to do so. But as Dan said, at this point, it's really an opportunity for all of us in looking for the future of helping our startup businesses to find individuals that could be potential investors, and that's where our Economic Development Directors said, "This is how you can help," and this is where we took those steps. And now we're going city to city, and it's Gilbert's turn. So Dan, get back up here. We'll see if the council has any questions, and then we can defer to each other.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember Ray?
I get to serve with the East Valley Partnership, and this is a great chance, as we want to build businesses in Gilbert, in the East Valley. And there's obviously a number of people with money in the East Valley, and this is a chance for them to benefit as well, but really also to help these businesses start up. We all know that it takes money to do that. And so I would encourage each of us, and everyone in the room, to talk about this. And obviously, it's not for everybody. Some people really like this. Other people won't be in a position to be a part of this. But whenever we have a chance to talk about business development, business growth, and people wanting to invest money, this is a great option. It's not government. It's none of that. It's just private individuals wanting to help with other businesses get started and potentially make money themselves.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Taylor?
First off, thank you. So many people are going to be blessed by these angels. Did I understand it correctly that if somebody wants to become an accredited investor, then this process will help them? Is there a piece of the program that would support that, if someone wants to get that accreditation status?
Yes. In great detail, it's explained how they could become accredited.
Okay.
And there are various groups in the valley that do that, including some that focus on our region.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you.
Thank you for being part of the marketing team.
Happy to do so. You should hear from all of us in the next little while, and maybe what we do is consolidate that effort through Councilmember Ray.
And just a quiz question for the council, because this is the best marketing tool. So Dan, what was the website that they could send out to individuals that might be interested that gives all the details? Do you remember that? Well, let's just say--
You, Mayor?
Okay, we'll have you tell them again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arun Khun.
Have a good night, too, Mayor.
Oyasumi nasai.
I am happy to help from a council perspective. If anyone has any questions or wants to send people my way, this is a great opportunity.
Mayor?
Thank you.
You know, just along the lines, I'd love to see some of those metrics drop in our economic development updates. I'd love to see if we can track the number of patents, or number of new inventions, or some of the things that this program will touch. A lot of times, all the big businesses get the love, but this is the small, the little guys that are just starting up. And when we get reports, I'd love to just see how that's going, because that's really a measure of success for Austin, what's happening up in Provo, the Bay Area. Love to have that included.
Just for the record, we give a lot of love to the little guys, too. It's our effort. It's a huge effort for us from economic development, through business walks, through Partners in Progress, and through a variety of other ways, including just to knock on the door. So there is a huge effort to reach out to what we would consider to be our small entrepreneur businesses. Some of them even are starting at home, and it's been a huge focus of ours through economic development efforts. So, thank you. All right. I believe that concludes the agenda, and we look to future meetings. I think Councilmember Peterson had one that he'd like us to add, which is great. We'll happily do that. And then a report from our town manager on current events.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Wanted to recognize a couple of employees. First, Dan Henderson, and in particular, Jennifer Graves, who, for the past year, have worked hard in our search for replacement for a university in our university building downtown. It was a national search. We spoke to over 36 different universities, some for periods as long as a year, to reach the point tonight where we've brought our first one forward. And as we're all aware, there are several more that we are talking to, but they did an exceptional job for it. Jennifer's work on putting together that market rate lease, as well as working through some of the intricate details in regards to the programs and exclusivity around programs to make sure we set everybody up for success, most of all, our community that just did some great work, and we're very appreciative of it. We're thrilled to have Park University now as a part of our community and look forward to the additional universities that will be coming as well, and we couldn't have done it without them. So thank you to both of them, with a special thank you to Jennifer. Next, I wanted to recognize Captain Bob Foster from our fire department. He retired last week from Gilbert Fire and Rescue. Bob was one of the original firemen to come over from rural metro when we created a municipal department here. His leadership and his personality, and just listening to the stories, the men and women who have worked with him through the years told, was really touching. And while we wish him well, it's also with a little bit of sadness that we watch our leaders retire, because the amazing service that we enjoy today in this community is because of the leadership of people like Bob and the mentorship they've provided to the next generation of fire leaders within the organization. So we wish him well, and thank him for all of his years of service to this community. And then lastly, Dana Birchman was recognized by Government Technology Magazine. She's one of the top 25 tech leaders in the nation this year in government technology. So we're thrilled for her and appreciate all the work she does for us as well, and it's a well-deserved recognition with that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick. A report from council on current events. Councilmember Cook?
Actually, I would like, Patrick, maybe you could share with the community about a change on the upper deck of that parking garage, just to let folks know what we're planning on doing up there.
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, Cook. Hello. My evaluation's in two months, just forget that. Yeah, so we have been looking at ways in which we can enhance the value in the Heritage District for our visiting patrons, and one of the things that we are in the process of doing is transitioning the top deck of our parking structure into a location where employees of the businesses within the district, as well as the faculties and staff at the university building, will have a permitted parking tag to utilize the top deck of that garage for their exclusive use, which then is going to allow for those more prime spaces closer to the businesses to be used by the patrons. So there was a lot of hard work that went into that by our economic development staff, our public work staff, our police department staff. Really, various points, it felt like just about every department in the organization got involved in that effort. But we look forward to getting that wrapped up and thank them for all that hard work and the benefit that'll accrue to the district from it.
Mayor, I just wanted to mention, I know we all received an email from Kyle Maris about choosing the consultant to do the general plan update, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the people that were involved with that, because we spent a good 10 hours together over the past couple of weeks, and one was Brian Anderson, the vice chair of the Planning Commission, and then our town engineer, David Fabiano, who I got to work very closely with those 10 hours, Kyle Maris, our director of development services, I always get that wrong, and Linda Edwards from our planning department, and also our planning admin, Tracy Asher, but most of all, our contract specialist, Rick Rask, because, boy, he kept us on task, kept us legal, kept us focused, which isn't always easy with me, and he did a great job. So I just wanted to thank them, and I look forward to working with our consultant, Michael Baker, on that big update.
Thank you. There'll be involvement from all corners of our community, and we invite our citizens to participate in that process. It'll be a huge-- Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. One item, we might as well pile on with the planning department, I guess. I want to thank specifically Catherine in the planning department for the work that she did to put together the information about the sign code. I'm one that's going to watch very closely the results of the data that she's gathering about the use of temporary signs, A-frames, banners, those types of things, because that's going to come back to us in a couple of years, and I want to be able to take a look at that. And she's done a great job, and I wanted to recognize her for the work she's done on that.
Mayor, thank you. I wanted, we skipped over the board's commissions. I wanted to touch on just one thing there, and then just a comment. But I want to thank Kelly Fost. We had a great meeting on Tuesday. Noah Monz here is the chairman of the Water Resources Municipal Property Corporation. Usually, there's not a lot of excitement in that one, but there was a unanimous vote to support a bond issue that will come forward in the next couple of council meetings. And just wanted to thank Kelly. There was a great discussion. The board members that are seated there really know their stuff, and the work that Kelly did, I'm really excited. Usually, something like that just goes on consent, but there was a massive savings to our taxpayers, the way she timed it. And anyways, wanted to recognize Kelly. I know I give her a hard time on a lot of other things, but I want to know how grateful I am for the great planning and how she set up the great discussions. They were asking her a lot of hard questions. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Noah. And I think that's really going to be a benefit for our community. Second thing, Mayor, is since I'm not running this year, I can say this, there's an election, and I want to encourage everyone to start paying attention. One thing about council elections, they're always at the very bottom of the ballot, and it really matters. So I would just encourage those that are following the council meeting tonight to get yourself registered to vote, or those in your home that are not registered to vote, start paying attention, start visiting with candidates, because your town touches you probably more frequently than any other level of government. So I would just encourage anybody following this meeting to get involved, participate, register to vote, and participate, and just be a good citizen and support our town. It's one of the best ways to do it. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you. And a report from the mayor on current events. I just have really one item, but as our weather continues in this beautiful way that it does in Arizona in the spring, I just want to encourage you to check the town calendar for special events that exist all over the town of Gilbert. I think every single one of our parks is full this weekend and next weekend, and I'm grateful for all of the community involvement that exists. And I would also like to highlight the Gilbert Global Village Festival, which we held next Saturday, right here at the municipal center. Great opportunity to experience many different cultures, and it's put on by our Parks and Rec Department, and they do a terrific job. So we invite all of you to Town Hall to experience Gilbert Global Village Festival next Saturday. With that, I have nothing additional, so I will announce the meeting adjourned. Thank you.